Okay, Brian, you're all set.
Thanks, Shelley. Running up the stairs.
Well, I got my teapot all ready for me to turn on and get some tea in the middle of our meeting. So yeah, just enough time for all that sort of stuff. So, Brian, do you know who is not attending today?
I do not.
Because I think Nancy's out of, not here.
She is. It's unfortunately just me kind of running the show tonight. So, well, you're running the show. I'm just kind of here helping.
Okay. Well, it's, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I think with five, we have a quorum.
You are correct.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and start. I am calling to order the August 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And so, Brian, are you going to take the role or?
I will.
Okay.
We have Kate Townley. Colin Agar. Do you say Colin? Yes, sir.
Yes, here.
Michelle Austin.
I'm here.
Judy Brown.
Here.
Kate Fuller.
Here.
Noel Atkins. Carl Adams.
Here.
Brenda Hubka.
Here.
And I believe I saw Mr. Martinez here as well.
Here.
Okay. All right. The first order of business is the approval of the draft minutes from the July 5th, 2020 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Forward a motion to approve. This is Brenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Can, Brian, will you call for the vote to approve? Or I'll call for the vote to approve and you need to.
I can, I can do it.
Okay.
Colin.
Abstain.
Chair Austin.
Yes.
Judy Brown.
Yes.
Kate Fuller.
Abstain.
Noel Atkins absent. Carl. Did you say yes?
Yes.
And Brenda?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. The next order of business is to approve the findings of fact for case USC 2022-027. Do I hear a motion to approve the findings of fact? Oh, Ryan has his hand up. Or he had his hand up.
Did I have mine up? If I did, it was not intentional.
Okay, all right. All right. I need a motion to approve the findings of fact. For 3242 South Tacoma Street.
I make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Thank you, Judy. Brenda, are you going to second that or Colin's going to second it? Okay, great.
Great, great.
Thank you very much. Are there, is there any discussion? Seeing none. I'm going to, I'm calling for the, for the vote.
All right, Colin.
Yes.
Chair Austin.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes. Hey, Brenda, could you mute? I keep getting all kinds of.
This is a different meeting now. It went from the steering committee to the community and planning. But I may not, I may.
Is Dan, you also, can you go ahead and mute, please? Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Kate Fuller.
Abstain.
Noel has gone. Carl.
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. It's approved. I actually withdrew by the other day and they've actually got their sign up for the, is it sun, sunroom brewing, something like that. Okay, um. Do we have anybody here from the public? It looks like we might. And Sarah, okay, all right. So. For the public forum, I'm going to open it up for members of the public to, to speak to the, to us on any topic. Your, your speaking time is limited to three minutes and you may ask questions, commissioners may ask questions of you. But commissioners do not answer questions from, from this, from the public. So if you wanted to speak about. Well, I think we just have a study session, so we don't have something else for you guys to worry about. So, okay. So I saw Sarah, I think, Sarah, can you unmute? And I believe, Brian, you need to swear her in.
Vicki, do I need to swear in the members of the public that are making public comment?
Good point.
No, not for public comment.
Good point. Yeah, this is not a public hearing. It's just a public forum. Okay, great. Thank you for, for clarifying that. So Sarah, would you like to speak?
I guess I got nominated, so to speak. I guess I just wanted to come on and voice my concerns. I went to the meeting on Thursday that was held by the group that is planning on developing the Navajo project. That was held at the Inglewood Rec Center and just left with some concerns about like what that means for our community. I felt like there were a lot of unanswered questions, especially regarding traffic in that area, which I think has been like an acknowledged problem already. And they stated that they had submitted their traffic study to the city, but really couldn't elaborate on whether that included like current developments that are already in progress and future developments and what that's really going to look like for that area.
Okay, Sarah, can I just interrupt real briefly here? Brian, I'm guessing that that was a neighborhood meeting that she was referring to for a PUD or some development that has not yet come to us. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay. All right. So Sarah, just so you understand what, where we are in the process, that particular development has not come to us yet for review or any input from us. I, I'm going to let you go ahead and continue with your minute and a half that you have left, but I just want to make sure you understand it might be more productive for you to come back when that, when that project is actually before us.
Okay, thank you. And I'm, I'm relatively like, I'm trying to learn more about the process, so I wasn't quite sure. And I appreciate you telling me that. Maybe I'll shift gears a little bit. So it was a community meeting.
Uh oh, you're muted now.
They kept referring to like the, the vision of Inglewood that was passed in 2015 and that might be, not be the correct name and how they really plan on developing that whole area. I guess my concern is just like, really, what is that going to do for our community? How are we going to support that? What does that look like long term? And I guess I realize it's not to you all yet, now that you've told me, but like there, there's already obviously one development that's been completed, a second one in progress. And I guess I'm just wondering, like, what does that look like? How does that look like long term? And really, like, how does that benefit Inglewood? They're talking about developing that entire area. And it seems really like the people that have been established here, I've been here for over 20 years as a homeowner, and it just really feels like we're being kind of put to the wayside for a large development that is more about like the bottom line than like actually developing and benefiting Inglewood. So I don't know how much time I have left, but I just, I guess I wanted to voice, like, I don't think the meeting went well. There was pretty much, from what I could tell out of 30 people, like, two people that might not totally oppose it. People left there very upset, I think, as like a total, and I talked to some people afterwards. So I guess I just wanted to put that on your radar, that like, it just doesn't feel like the community is being heard as far as how they feel about this being built in their backyard. And thank you for your time and thank you for the education that you gave me tonight.
Well, I, I, well, you're, you're welcome. I don't think our intent was necessarily to give you an education. It's just that I want to make sure that you understood that we really didn't know what you were talking, I mean, I could make an assumption, but we really didn't know what you were talking about and I had no idea what the scale was and that sort of thing. Some other commissioners may, but, but, but I don't know. But thank you very much. And I do encourage you to come back when we have the public hearing for, for that particular development. Carl, I see your hand up.
Sam, what are you talking about?
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't catch all of that. Yes, the Sam's Automotive, the Radcliffe one that also came out as a pod was slightly discussed, but their focus was the Sam's Club Automotive, that entire city block or that half a block better that they plan on building. I think it's like, I can't remember the exact amount of units, but it's, 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 it's large. It's the entire area.
Okay.
95, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Sarah from the commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Daniel Reed, are you a member of the public that would like to speak to us?
Yeah, I sure am. Thanks, Michelle.
I'll get Becky in just a moment. Bye, Daniel.
Cheers. I'd like to make my comment and it is about the same project, just for, for a point of reference and entry into the, the three minute comment. I came a few weeks ago, it might have been about a month ago, and, and kind of did share my same concern about the level of community engagement and the way that the community engagement is happening. I think I share the same concern that Sarah brought. That meeting was a bad representation of how this policy is laid out right now. Specifically that our developer is the one controlling the community engagement and the sources of information about the development. That kind of information asymmetry is, is extremely problematic and it played out in just the way that I would have predicted, which is we've got a bunch of angry citizens who are now angry at the developer, their lobbyist communication firm, the architect, and shortly, if this keeps moving forward, it will be directed unfortunately at this committee in the city. And I really want you to hear that because I don't think the intent is ever to put neighbors in one line and the city in another line. Unfortunately, I think that's what this process is leading to. I live on Le Pen. That's the street that's primarily impacted by this. No one is in favor of this. There's vocal opposition and this is not a community supported event. Now, totally understand that this hasn't come to you in a formal process, but I do think you need to be hearing this. And if you would have come to the meeting, you would have come to, I believe, a similar conclusion. The point I'd really like to make is unclarity about the process. I've read, I've done a legal review on the PUD process that's outlined in the municipal code. And I have to say, there's quite a lot of uncertainty and unclarity around, for example, the term welfare. What does it mean to impact or significantly impact welfare? I can't make sense of that and I'm an economist who studies issues of livability in community. That's something that I think could potentially become a very litigious topic because there's no clear definition. What does welfare mean? What does that mean to you? Is it economic welfare, social welfare? And frankly, who determines that? We also talk about community character. I would not say I've ever seen a city council person or any of you in my neighborhood. Now, that's just because I haven't seen you, but I know my community. I know what my community feels like on a daily basis. So when we talk about impacting community character, let's just take a frame of reference. Right now, there's about 2,600, something like that, people in our census tract. This unit alone, just this unit alone will add 500 people. That's adding 20% density to our zip, to our census tract. That's a real problem when you think about community character and changing the character of a community. I'm going to pause here because I know I'm throwing a lot at you. I just want to say it's really important that we have clear definitions that I, and that I understand as a community member, what you're voting on. So when it says you have to vote on a topic, on a PUD, according to community welfare, I would really love to know what that means, how you're making that decision, what data you're bringing to the table. Because I do this all day long for a living. Just did it 10 hours today for a community in Idaho. I am all in on supporting my community through data, but until I get a definition, there's nothing I can bring to the table. So again, bringing a lot, putting a lot down here, I have a few short minutes. I'm sure they're over. I'm going to pause, take any questions you might have, but I'm going to step back for a minute. Thanks everyone for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. And yes, your three minutes are up, but no problem. Are there questions from any of the commissioners that you would like to address, Daniel?
Well, I'll make just one statement, Daniel, and I do appreciate the information that you're presenting and all of you are presenting and appreciate hearing honestly ahead of time a little bit of, of where your concerns are. Also appreciate you coming in, like you said, a few weeks ago or months ago. I forget exactly when that was. So appreciate your continued, you know, efforts in this regard. And we recognize that maybe not everything is 100% clear in our current, you know, coding documents. And one of the things that we are working on is, is updating those. Obviously, that doesn't solve the problem right now. But honestly, I'm noting that what, what is, what is it well for? How are we defining that? And while that might not happen before this conversation is complete, maybe it's something that we can work on and, and make better for the next, the next time. So appreciate your, thanks. I'm sure it's something we will define in some way, but it will be more clearly defined in, in future revisions of that document.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Brenda?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment too, that our committee is a volunteer staff that is meant to give an informal vote to city council before they vote. And it is our job to kind of assess how the community feels about this kind of thing. And there are those of us who do see the comments on Nextdoor. I'm a, one of the, the lead representatives for Anglewood Unleashed. So Jason Park is something that we really pay attention to and all the people that, the participation there and any issues that go on. So I'd say a good number of us do. So there, I'd say a good number of us do uh have a good pulse of of how the community feels. But please encourage your neighbors um to come to the bill, to the meeting when we have that uh. A formal discussion, and it will be posted on the city website. And we'll try to, I mean, I'll probably post something on Nextdoor, but um you know, watch for just kind of some. Formal announcements about that for another chance to speak. At that meeting, we provide a an inform, we 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 say whether or not we want, we approve of the development. But then the final stage, it goes to city council, and they will have the final say.
Yeah, thank you, Brenda, and I I'll just clarify that just a little bit further. We don't, what we vote upon is we recommend to city council. Whether that we recommend to them to go ahead and approve it, but Brenda's correct, it's city council that has the final decision. But um part of the packet that comes to us in a PUD is supposed to include uh a recap. Shall we say of the neighborhood meetings, so I will be paying particular attention to that, uh in this, that that one in this case.
And who is providing that written commentary?
It's, I believe it's the developer that does that, is am I correct, Brian? I re- I rely on staff heavily.
And I'm I'm the newest staff member on this group. Um it's either the developer or your staff, but you know, I can I can go back and look at some of our past ones to see who provides that commentary.
Well, you know, I I've seen John's here on on with us, and John, I know, has been around, working with us for quite a while. John, do you have a comment on provides that um the minutes of the neighborhood meeting?
So um I really have never had anything to do with uh neighborhood meetings for PUDs, so I'm not really sure.
Good answer.
Sounds, okay, sounds like an important answer to have.
It is, it's it's very important, yeah.
So that would be great evidence for staff to look into, not that it's my recommendation, but I would personally be very interested in who's providing that level of analysis and feedback.
Let me briefly go back to Brenda, Brenda, you didn't take your hand down, so do you have further information or comments for us?
Oh, sorry, nope, lowering hand.
Okay, Kate Fuller has her hand up.
Um I was just wondering, Brian, can people start going ahead and sending the city letters of disapproval? And if so, where can they send those? Because I know that really matters when our committee reviews and then also when city council reviews.
Um yeah, if they have some letters of um opposition or any kind of opposition that they wanna present. Sorry, I thought I started my video, uh they can send it to me, um I'll put my email address in the chat. Uh that you can send it to or our um our community development inbox, I'll put those emails both in the chat in just a few seconds.
And I just added that, add that, Michelle, isn't it right that they'll print out every single letter that's received for that PUD? And then that will be part of the packet presented?
Kate, I remember seeing letters like that in the packet, I don't know that there's an actual. Requirement that they be there, but if it, if it's not even a requirement, I think it's important for us to see it. See those letters as well as city council sees those letters, um because we really don't have the whole picture.
Yeah.
I I believe the letters we've seen in the past were people who could not attend the public hearing, wanted to have their comments made. But either way, I think um they should be presented to us regardless of whether the person shows up as well. But that's my recollection of all the letters we've seen, was people who could not actually physically attend for their comments. So they sent them ahead of time, but I don't know why you couldn't double up.
Right, well, and and to to Brenda's point previously, I mean, we are all volunteers. And um we we actually, I mean, I I oftentimes get my information from who's in my. My uh exercise class down at the Mally Center, so um you know, that we all have our different ways of how we interact with the public. But um I agree with you, Judy, that we we need to see as much information as possible. Because we're, we're not prohibited from attending those neighborhood meetings. But they can give the public the appearance that we are either for or against a project. So we are encouraged to sort of not not go to those meetings, or if we do go, be very um quiet and sit in the back and not ask a bunch of questions. Um, okay, Becky, um would you like to speak now?
Um sure, hi, um I also attended the meeting that Sarah all attended. Um you know, I don't think there's enough. Out there for the people to to acknowledge that a lot of these meetings are going on. Um now, I actually wrote a letter um and hand-delivered them to, one to the city council. And one to zoning, I believe, um about the PUDs, you know, going up. You know, saying that, you know, it's, they're not listening to. Inglewood members, the the longstanding residents, and you know, a property that these. Are going up against, um you know, people on Le Pan having, you know, those apartments. Condos or whatever they're, you know, calling them, being put up, you know, fifty feet from their property line, and. They're not listening to these people, I mean, you can't stop progress, I realize that. And they have made some compromises, but that doesn't change the fact that all those people on Le Pan don't want that going up. I mean, if you look around Inglewood, you can certainly tell the new developments that they've come in. And mowed down the old houses and put up every square inch of property, a building on it. And it's just not Inglewood, if you look at those houses, the new houses that they have put up. Um you know, I I'm not for a lot of this stuff that's going up. And there's not enough information going out to the Inglewood residents. For them to come forward and, you know, give their piece on this. People are not hearing about these meetings, and that's a big problem. I mean, I don't look at the city website all the time to see what's, you know, what agenda is going on. What what meeting should I attend today? And people are not getting that information about the public meetings. I don't know what to do about it. And you know, I mean, people have a life, I get it. Yeah, sometimes they're just too busy, they can't attend, like I said, they're they're just not getting the information to be able to participate, I guess is what I'm saying. And it's it's sad that all these. Non-single-family dwellings are going up in Inglewood, it's sad. I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thanks for listening.
Well, well, thank you, Becky, and um I think that um it's a, it's a very. Uh difficult problem to solve to get the word out. I think technically, in terms of what the uh the code says, I think it's only, what, a thousand feet or something like that. Of where they actually have to go and um let people know about the um the the. Neighborhood meeting, um I know that the city tries very hard to get the word out, but frankly. It it seems to me like in this day and age, we should be able to develop some sort of a email list or something like that for the city. That could really let people know about things, but we're not to that point yet, so um but it it is a problem. And all's I can say is encourage all of you uh to get the word out. And and to take a look at when this um proposed project comes before us. Um Jennifer, are you wanting to speak as well? Jennifer White?
Hi, good evening, yes, please, um my name is Jennifer White. Um I am gonna piggyback off of Sarah, Daniel and um and Becky. I I'm here specifically for the proposals um that are going on, um. I think one of the things, I I purchased my home in the end of twenty twenty, so I I've been here for a couple of years now. Um the one thing that I wanted to just kind of bring up and just for food for thought is. You know, we bought this home two years ago for a couple of different reasons, wanted to get out of the city, um because we were living in Stapleton and it was growing. Like crazy, the traffic was horrific, it was just getting too much. Um we found that sense of community here a couple of years ago, I mean, the second day we were here, the fire department came by and said, oh my gosh, I can't believe all the work you've done. We're so excited to have you, and I thought, wow, and then learning about my neighbors, you know, the person to my left. Her, she was raised here, she's raising her child, her mom is around the corner, you've got next to her mom, you've got her daughter. And then two blocks down, there's others, and so that became something where it felt like this was right. This was a sense of community I wanted to be a part of, and I I have absolutely loved being here. What I will say, in the last several months, I have contacted my realtor, asked if I can sell, if it's smart. I am quite frankly horrified and appalled at what is being presented to this community and what we're trying to build. One thing that stood out to me, and I have never been able to get it out of my head, is I'm the citizen, Joe Anderson made a comment. Um and it said, a large apartment complex going up in the middle of a neighborhood full of single-family homes is an unacceptable radical change. And that really resonated with me because what we are saying as a community is, you know what? Your home is your largest purchase you will ever purchase in your life, for ninety nine point nine percent of us, and we take pride in that home. And these are single-family, hard-working citizens that are working their tail off to to keep in their homes. And to me, when I get off of work, I'm a director in IT, I work my long hours, and you know what I do after work? I love to go outside and relax, and I, my heart is completely broken for those people, specifically on the Pan. You'll come up to me closer and closer as the builds continue to to happen. But within fifty feet, a hundred feet, these people are going to be in their backyards looking up in a single-family home. Directly up where people can look down on them, and my heart truly is broken for them. And I'm appalled when I go to these city meetings and these community meetings, because I just hear justification as to why this is happening. And I don't feel like the community is being heard, and so one of the reasons I wanted to come is I know it's not on the docket yet. But I just wanted to give people food for thought and what's been bothering me and keeping me up at night. I've just talked to a woman earlier today, been in her home for thirty-five years and said, I gotta get out of here. We're doing this to our own community and that's heartbreaking to me, um and I I am all for growth. I I wanna be a part of Inglewood, I'm here after work, I want to do this. But I wanna do it smart and what makes sense, and we want it to be a walkable community, there's plenty of other options. And building high-rise apartments within a few hundred feet of people's homes is wrong. And that's all I ask in closing, is that every single one of us should go home tonight and sit on our porch. Whether it's your front porch, your back porch, wherever you are, that you find that sanctuary, and think about it and think. Would that still be where you wanna be looking up at a four or five-story building? Um that is what I want to have happen, so thank you for your time, I'm sorry rambling, but I appreciate it. And I'll answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for Jennifer? Okay, uh Amelia, are you wanting to speak?
I'm the city attorney's intern, I'm giving a presentation later.
Okay, alright, thank you, I do see uh somebody by the name of Dan with a big orange block there. As Dan, are you wanting to speak?
Uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Um I didn't really wanna speak, but um again, trying to piggyback off of what these.
Can you say your whole, can you tell us your whole name, because we also see as Dan.
Sure, sure, it's 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 Dan Jacobson.
Okay, thank you.
And I own the property, which is a duplex, it's six fifty-six and six sixty East Yale, it's non-conforming. It's one thousand forty-eight feet. Uh it's a duplex, as I said, built in nineteen thirty-five. Code now states that I cannot change the footprint at all. It was built as a dup- as duplex, uh then it still is. I, it it's it's in an R one A zone, it's got, I think, nine thousand one hundred and fifty feet. Uh with a one thousand fifty-foot structure on it. Um I'd like to add maybe. Uh a hundred and fifty feet per side to it. Code now states, I can't do it, I'm just trying to keep what's there already. And has been there for uh eighty-five years. Uh and and I I understand you guys have bigger fish to fry with. Uh apartment complexes that, you know, three hundred apartments and and plus perhaps. But you know, when when somebody says, well, this will change the character of the neighborhood. If you change the footprint, uh I've been told that um. Uh you know, that if we give it to you, Mr. Jacobson, then we've gotta give it to somebody else. Uh I I mean, you can, you can go a block and a half away and see. And and by the way, I am allowed to tear it down and build a four thousand square foot home, that would be fine. Um. And um I I guess, you know, I hadn't really intended on speaking, so I'm not completely prepared. But I think you get the point, and again, going back to what these other folks have just said. You know, I'm not trying to make this a a three-story uh uh structure. Uh I'm, I, it would, it would impact nobody. There's eight non-conforming uh structures, not counting ADUs. In the R one A zone in the entire city of Inglewood. So why, they're saying you can't do, you can't, you you can't even add on. Um I've got great setbacks, eighteen feet on each side, and so I I know I'm getting a bit specific. And 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 maybe you don't need to hear this, and but it's just frustrating to try and keep the area as it is. And and then I'm told, no, you gotta keep your your little building there, seven-foot ceilings that would probably was state-of-the-art in nineteen thirty-five. But it isn't.
Dan, your three minutes are up, and um thank you for your comments, it is very frustrating, I understand. Um Brenda, you had some questions for him?
Yes, yes, Dan, I have a question for you. Um did anyone from uh code or development tell you whether or not you could apply for a variance?
Um I've been, uh I've been there, I've spoken to a a person by the name of Eisen. Um uh yes, but they said, let's play this out first, in the code next. I've been to every uh uh meeting I could attend uh in person. And uh I was, I spoke at the last one online. Um so yes and no, but they said to wait, let's see, cause let's try and work this out, and I appreciate it. I I truly do, and it might, but you know, my piece of the pie is so small. In comparison to what these folks are talking about, and I understand why, and it makes perfect sense. So anyway, I won't take.
Yeah, just to, just to piggyback on that, I applied and I got a variance. You know, I've built an ADU and my garage doesn't line up with everybody in all the other garages around me. Mine is within, is set back a little too further so that the additional structure is not within thirty-two percent of the backyard. It's a long story, but I didn't wanna wait for them to redo the code in code next. So you have a choice to see if it pans out in your favor or um apply for a variance. You'll apply, you gotta put up a sign that says, I have applied for a variance and uh the hearing is on this date. And then you speak before um a body of people just like us, volunteers, different group of people. And they'll vote whether or not to grant you your variance, and I was approved, so I don't know, I throw that up there.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's 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 great to know. I mean, it's just that the timeframe was such that I felt I'd play this out and perhaps give the code a chance to change, whi- which I think, given the fact, you know, that there's only eight in the in the entire city, you know, it 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 it's not that big of a stretch.
Dan, we you've already exceeded your three minutes, so I I don't mean to be rude and interrupt, but but you are getting quite specific to your particular property, and that's way before it has anything really to do with us. So I would encourage you to do what what Brenda suggested, contact community developments and talk to them because there are, that's the whole purpose of variances, is to allow people that, you know, little foot here, a little couple of feet there, that sort of thing, and it's not a major impact to the to the city. Very often, they are granted, so that would be your next step.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, anybody that I missed from the general public? Have to find my agenda, sorry. Oh, Carl, you have have your hand up.
I just just want to say that the years that I've been on the committee here, those people, I think that I can remember coming to make any comments, so really appreciate your your effort in making comments. And what I've seen in the in the city is you have to make these comments hundreds of times. I don't want to discourage you, but just because you say something one time doesn't, it doesn't sink in. Our our meetings when we're discussing the 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 project and city council also, the city council will need to know what how you feel. Let them know what 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 you want and make make it known that what you want. That's they they won't know unless you tell them. So appreciate your coming out. Thank you.
Becky, we've already caught called upon you, and you've your three minutes are up. Is there something very quick you want to say? I want to be generous, but also want to be respectful of the commissioner's time.
No, exactly, and I agree. I was just wondering if you had by chance seen the letter that I had turned into the city council? And planning, you know, it was, it comes out, it starts, City of Inglewood, are you listening?
No. Okay, Becky, we we have gotten absolutely no information at this point in time regarding that project, nor would it be proper for us to get it. Because we don't want to be seen as prejudging things, so no. So, but Carl's Carl's point is well taken. Make sure you you monitor the websites next door, whatever means you have gathered information, and make sure you attend all of the meetings. Awesome. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Okay. All right, I think now we're on to our study session, which is commission training, and who am I to call upon for that?
That's what I'm here for tonight.
There we are. Hi, Amelia. Becky, can if you're done, can you please unraise your hand or put your hand down or? Thank you. Okay, there we go. Okay, Amelia and Victoria, take it away.
Sure. Well, before Amelia starts, I just want to introduce her. She um she's our legal intern this summer and a little bit into the fall. She's arising three L at Denver University, Denver University School of Law, and she's been doing tremendous work for us and and the city. And really thank her for putting this together tonight. So with that, I'll let Amelia take it away.
Vicky, could you actually share the PowerPoint on your screen so I can see my notes?
Yeah, let me start sharing my screen and bear with me as I do that. I'll be the Vinoite to you today.
Real quick, Amelia, before you get started, does the public, are they welcome to stay for this if they want to? Obviously, you don't have to if you don't want to, but welcome to stay around and learn a little bit more about what we have going on.
Yeah, this is nothing, nothing confidential here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, awesome. So I do not know, I can't. All right, here we are. So tonight, we're going to be going over a little bit of training for the Planning and Zoning Commission in terms of some legal requirements. So we can go to the next slide. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, along with making recommendations to city council, this commission makes decisions about planning and zoning changes during a public hearing process. Okay, go to the next. This public hearing and subsequent decision-making is what makes the Planning and Zoning Commission a quasi judicial body. And so what being a quasi judicial body means is that the commission is acting like a judge, so they're going to hear facts about a case, and then they're going to apply the law and make a decision regarding that matter. And this is why remaining an unbiased decision maker is really important, because when the Planning and Zoning Commission makes a decision, that decision is legally binding. But it is to note that if a decision is made that one party feels was an error, they can appeal it into the court system. Okay, next one. So remaining unbiased is why we will talk about ex parte communications. So imagine that you're on trial for committing a crime, and the judge had dinner with the prosecutor the night before. This is what we want you to avoid, because it's going to deny that other party procedural due process. So by speaking to one of the parties in, let's say, a change for or granting a variance. So when you're talking about that case without the other party present, that other party is not able to hear the arguments that person is making and make other arguments on their behalf. So there are also major legal implications to engaging in these sorts of ex parte contacts. This is one of the reasons your decision can be invalidated or be grounds for an appeal, and nobody wants to go to court. Okay, so the next one. So here's a slide to show you how to avoid ex parte contacts. You should make sure that all the written materials that you prepare and receive for the hearing are shared with all parties. And you may also find yourself in situations where you're approached one of the parties. So although you might see them in King Supers, and it feels awkward to say, no, you need to tell them that you can't talk about the case, it's improper, and it's unethical for you to be engaging with them on the matter. But things do happen, so if you suspect that you may have engaged in an ex parte contact as a commission member, you should first tell the city attorney's office and report that contact to everybody at the start of the hearing when that case is being heard, and do so completely, just so you can either be recused from the from the matter, or the city attorney's office can take the steps that we need to take.
Amelia, would you mind me pausing you for a moment? Carl has his hand up.
Yeah, sure.
You were here about twenty minutes ago, and you witnessed the people coming from the public, which they they're invited to come to the public and and speak that something they do, we do every meeting. And you witnessed them coming and talking about the opposing a project that we have not had any information on whatsoever. So they're opposing the project, and a developer is not here to oppose their opposition. So what happens there?
Um, so Vicky can correct me, but I'm under the impression that that case has not been fully set to be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission yet. So in this case, we're also in a public hearing setting right now, so if that developer wanted to come and speak their mind tonight, if they wanted to, as part of the public comment, they could have. That's why we're and we're here in a public setting that's a lot different than if you're in a back room talking to a commissioner about your stance on the issue, and nobody else knows. I hope that answers your question.
We, not really. We're here in a public setting, and we're hearing from one side of a a pro- a project. Okay, this is not a hearing. This is not a public hearing. This is a public comments on a commissioner's meeting. So but we're hearing one side of a a project, and we're not hearing from the other side of the project. So is that, does that not matter because it's not a public hearing?
No, it wouldn't matter because it's not set to be heard yet, and also that developer also had the chance to attend this public hearing as well, or sorry, public comment as well, if they wanted to have their opportunity to speak as well. Just the fact that they're not here, that well, that's their loss.
And and to add to Amelia's, you know, response and comment, which is is spot on, and also, and again, Carl, thank you for the question. What I think is also important is that with this being part of a public setting, when this matter in this case is finally before the commission, there is now a record of what the concerns were, so that the developer will have the opportunity to respond to that information. You know, one thing that Amelia mentioned, and then and that can happen to correct when there is one of these ex parte communications, is to take that message and that information, distribute it amongst the commission members, so that everyone has access to it, as well as the opposing side, so that there is still a fair, unbiased process that we apply when making these decisions.
Okay, the the comments are recorded. Or there, you can you can go back and look at anybody can go back and look at them. So so that's I'm not, I'm not sure I really follow you there.
Sure. So what I mean by that is the developer will be able to respond to them when the case is is before on the commission, because you know, there's now a record of it, that it is recorded. They can go back and see, we can make that part, that you know, staff can make that part of the agenda packet when the case is before the commission. The issue with ex parte communications is that they're not occurring in such a setting before, where the public and and others have had the opportunity to come respond and address the commissioners. They're happening, like Amelia mentioned, at King Supers, at the grocery store, when you're taking a walk, or or perhaps, you know, privately by email, or if you're viewing a a potential site for development. They're happening outside of, you know, a public scrutiny, really, and potentially behind closed doors, and that's where the concern starts to grow about what's being communicated, and then what, whether or not those private meetings and information are then being relied upon to make decisions before the commission.
We're not, we haven't heard the about these meetings, and I I haven't heard about any of these meetings whatsoever. If we were to go to one of these meetings, what would our limits on listening or commenting be?
That's a great question. I just want to make sure I understand the meetings you're referring to. You mean like the community meetings?
The community, the developer meetings with the community, yes.
Right. So what we'd want to, so the important things to remember there, and and part of this will also be addressed in other new training material that we're putting together in connection with the city clerk's office. We want to make sure that, at the very least, that there's not any, that the commissioners aren't sitting together and and coming, you're making coming, you know, arriving at a decision outside of the public hearing process. That goes back to you, why we don't email everyone, have no comments that go back and forth in the thread, because we, again, we want to make sure that decisions are being made in these forums, so we would want to be mindful of that. But then when it comes to, you know, being at the community meeting, um, you know, again, making sure that you're not being seen to prejudge the issue, but you can be there to to get information about the development. But when it will be eventually becoming before the commissioners, because the 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 finding, the results of those community meetings are are put together as part of the agenda packet that eventually becomes comes before the the commission.
Okay, that's very helpful. Your presentation is, to me, is cut and dried and not realistic. Where real life is, to me, is different. I mean, it's hard to take on and control the other one, you know, that's. I can see, I can see presentation, you know, how it should be working, and it's usually the presentation is ideal, but you get into real life, and it's a little bit different. So appreciate your presentation, though.
Judy, I think your hand is up next.
So just, I don't know, Carl, if this will help. I mean, we we have, we've had multiple discussions on ex parte over the last, the time that I've been on planning and zoning, and I can't say I have a full grasp of it. But my understanding is we are citizens as well. We are free to go to community meetings. We are free to even stand up and ask questions. We have the right to do that. It it what what I understood in the past were a couple of things. And and this is a perfect example in this particular case, because I happen to have been included in the mailing, because they extended their mailing to fifteen hundred feet instead of a thousand, so that actually reached where I live on this particular one. I debated with myself about going to the community meeting and chose not to, and that was simply because there is another development that's I found out coming up that that my na- that I was included in that mailing as well. And I was aware of the opposition, because a neighbor talked to me because they knew that I was on planning and zoning. And what I said to them was, you guys need to come to the public hearing. I cannot participate in any active opposition or for it. I explained to them how the public hearing works, how they can communicate with community development, how they can make sure that we know their position, but that he and I couldn't know the, no longer talk about it. I could let him know when it came, when I heard that if I knew that the public hearing was going to happen for us, I would happily communicate that to him so that he could attend, but I believe. So that's where, and you can tell me if I handled that incorrectly or not, but what I was told is we're citizens. I might have a an opinion on that. If I have a really strong opinion on that, then I need to recuse myself from the public hearing. I can't I can't be unbiased if if it were, if I lived with my back, if I lived in one of those houses that back to La Pan or on La Pan that's going to back to this, and I was very strongly opposed, I believe that as a commissioner, I have to recuse myself from that public hearing, but I could stand up and speak in my opposition at that point. So you can tell me if I completely understood, misunderstood what we'd been told before, but that's how I handled this situation. I don't know if that helps you, Carl, but make sure that I'm right first before that helps you or not.
Amelia or Vicky, do you have a response for what Judy just talked about?
Sure. I mean, so it's not a conflict of interest to have an opinion. The conflict arises if you act on that opinion and personally. Um, the conflict arises if you act on that opinion and personally benefit it from it rather than putting the general public's interest first. So if you're, you know, right, coming into the situation like you've talked about where you're, you feel like you're conflicted. Um, and, and you're not able to put the public interest, you know, before your own, uh, um, you know, how. Personal decisions, then that might be an issue where you think you might need to recuse yourself. And our office is certainly available to talk about that with you and to, you know, go back and forth to assess whether or not that is something. Um, you should consider doing, uh, or, or if it's just a matter of where you need to come forward to the, to the rest of the commissioners and explain the situation. And, and you come, we can come to that decision openly and in a public manner. Yeah, there, there's ways to address that. Um, but from, from how, if I understood what you, you talked about correctly. I, I don't think that you handle the situation in an incorrect manner. But, um, again, we'd always encourage you or any of the commissioners to reach out to our office. And, and we can help, you know, address individual issues as they arise.
Thank you, Vicky. Um, Colin, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to follow up, Carl. I understand that you're saying real world might not act. Exactly that way, but we did all take an oath to be on this committee and we signed paperwork that said we would. Do what we said we are going to do. And, you know, I think we all take that very seriously and. Whether I would. Absolutely shut somebody down the very first minute they started talking about something before I realized it. I don't know if that would happen. But I think we're all here because we want to do what's best for the city. And I think the. The intent of these guidelines and this training is to just make us aware that we don't want to get out of. Line in that regard. I think it's something that we're all intending to do. The right way. And I, I don't know that it is really a true statement to say that it's not the way it works out outside. I, I think it does work that way and I, I hope we all are doing it the right way also.
Carl. Now you've muted yourself. You were unmuted. Now you've muted yourself.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the. We're all different. Every, every one of the commissioners are, are different. They have different backgrounds. Different goals. Uh, you, you, you can't take that away from people. And if you do, then all you need is one robot. You, you put in some data and you, uh, get a response back. So we're not robots and we have our personal interests and, uh. Um. We, we, I think, uh, w- we've got a pretty good, uh, commission now. I think, uh, they're basically interested. In, uh, improving the city of Englewood. Uh, the one thing I do have a problem with is. The commission has sat through ten months of, uh. Development, uh. Uh, the, the, the. Not procedures, but the, the, the. Ten months of, uh, development. Meetings have been just one right after another and telling us, you know, how we're supposed to think. And I'm sorry, but I don't, uh, I, I don't think that way. You, you owe me, uh, one thing and I'm going to say, well, okay, yeah, I kind of see your point. And you tell me something else and I, that's. Not what I think. And I'm going to say, well, no, I don't think so. You're wrong. So it, it's all, everybody's got their own opinion and, uh, I think. The commission right now is, uh, a lot of good people that are really interested in improving, uh, Englewood. And that's the point. That's what we're here for. So that's what we need to do and, uh, try to do our best and. Come up with, uh, decisions that, um, we can agree on. So. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Uh, Brenda, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I, I just want to say this out loud. So what my understanding is of and whether or not it's affirmed. My understanding is communication outside this team and amongst each other. Um, and that communication should be nowhere but here. I, I can tell you that some people have reached out to me and I, I, I've even, it's public that I have simply said. That here's the process. And please go to speak at these meetings when it's announced and go to city council. Uh, because a lot of people, um, I've noticed on Nextdoor will, will post things like. The city is going to, has decided to buy that property or the city is going to make us do this, you know? So I always seek to clarify what the process is and without giving my opinion. But then when we do go to make a decision about these properties and like Carl said, we had a whole bunch just come through and they're all. I went to those meetings because they're right by my house and I didn't recuse myself. Um, I listened to the presentation and I made a decision. Uh, based on, you know, whether they met the criteria and on the opinions of the people who spoke. So, uh, my question is, this development that hasn't come up before us. Might be very unpopular and how much I can use that in weighing my decision. Or in, in, in approving this P U D. That's the question.
So Brenda, I think that's a great question. Um, and. You know, the community meetings, that information is, you should be part of the agenda packet. To the extent that you're getting information that's outside of that. Um, you know, sharing that with the rest of the commissioners, they can also rely on that information. Um, would it? Would take the, take that information being out of the realm of ex parte communications. And putting it into this public sphere where then, you know, it's completely appropriate to use and rely on that, the, that, the facts and the evidence. That you've gained from those community meetings, um, to the benefit of the entire body. So, you know, that could be okay as long as it's now being shared with the rest of the commissioners. And I, I do recall, um, being, you know, present for, for some of the, um, you know. Prior decisions that this commission has, has made. Where references to what has been heard at other community meetings or, or in the community has been, you know, discussed as part of, um. You know, different members, uh, when they make their findings. And then you, that does allow for other members to have that information and to be able to rely on it. Um, I mean, the most important things here, you know, in taking message that we want you all to take away is like, let's just be transparent. Um, and make sure that the decision is based on information that everyone has available to them.
Colin, I saw your hand up briefly. Oh, there it is again.
Unmute and then I never unmuted. Uh, I, I think you basically just said this, uh, Victoria. So. We can have our own opinions and we can share those and influence those as long as we're doing it all. Together. And so, yeah, Carl, I, I love your input on, you know, things that I might think a little differently and I love to hear, you know, different viewpoints on that. So I, I guess the reality is you're right. We, we all do have our own opinions and our own backgrounds and our own desires. From this and our own thoughts on what is right for the city of Englewood. I think you're right. We have a good group that. Generally wants to do better, but it's okay that we have different input as long as we're sharing it with each other and not doing it in small rooms. And then I did have one other question that you mentioned earlier. You noted that our decisions are binding. But aren't our decisions just recommendations to council or I guess? Is that? How does that kind of follow up?
Right. So you make the decision and I'm guessing. Nine and a half times out of ten, city council will. Take that decision. That's what I mean, that they're binding in some other places, other municipalities sometimes. Decisions of a quasi judicial board are legally binding when they make that decision, just depending on the city's charter. Um. But yes, you're correct that once city council ratifies your decision, it is legally binding.
So is that just to, to make sure I'm understanding, does that mean our decision becomes legally binding once they've approved it? Or does it become their decision at that point?
I think both, that kind of both. I mean, if your recommendation is adopted. Becomes legally binding sort of thing. So. Vicky, can you clarify?
Sure. Uh, uh, yeah, essentially, yes. And what the, the issue would be is if there was some sort of, you know, impropriety with. The decision made, um, in the, in, in this commission, but then council ratified. In the event that there was ever a legal challenge, um, it could be, you know, the decisions could be reversed.
And just to chime in on conditional use permits, you are all, you all are the decision making body for conditional uses. So.
Well, I can tell we're not the official, uh, decision makers on capital improvement projects. That's for sure.
Yeah, no kidding.
They never follow all of our recommendations on that.
It's a good start. It's a good base.
Uh, Carl, you've got your hand up again.
Uh, the, the commission really does follow pretty close with our, uh, capital and. Uh, the things that's, it's amazing how close they do follow us. Uh, one thing I'd like to mention on, uh, when we do have hearings. We're given the notice like within a week of the hearing. And I'd like to have more time to look into. If, uh, like the last hearing we had was for a brewery. Well, okay, whatever. That's, that's, that's fine. You know, there's not a whole lot of things to look into on that. But on the, uh. Apartments come up, I'd like to have, uh, at least a couple of weeks on that. I'd like to have that on our schedule for two weeks ahead of the hearing. Now, I don't know if Nancy's not here, so I'm not sure who would really, uh, do that.
I, I think the challenge might be not holding up their. Public, you know, not holding up the process because we don't have a meeting coming up. I think that may be some of the problem that we only get a week, but the whole process is so long and cumbersome, I think. Then in some cases, waiting for us to have a regular meeting could put them back a whole month. I'll let Ryan answer, but I presume it's trying not to hold up the process anymore.
What I would say is that we have a lot of notification requirements that we have to meet. So to get to a meeting. We have to start working backwards in about a month. Um, but built into that is staff preparation of all these reports that go into it, which takes time for additional reviews. Um, so we can get together with Nancy and kind of. Maybe look at our timeline of how quickly we get information to you all. And maybe that can be part of an upcoming training. Uh, we can kind of report back. Where we're at and how quickly I. Yeah, I'd have to defer to Nancy to know how far out in advance that the information gets to you.
Carl, are you saying that in you're concerned about having enough time to review it or enough time for the public to be? Notified of it?
Uh, I say both. The, the public needs to be notified that, uh, we're having the hearing so that they can come and voice their opinion. And we need to have enough time that, uh, if, if we're busy, we need to. Drive by the location, look at it and, you know, and maybe try to assess what we're. Going to hear because during, during the, um, the hearing is basically the developers. We're getting all the information from the developer that's doing the project and we're. Uh, they want to do this, they want to do that, uh, they're going to pay this many taxes and we're going to benefit from retail and. Uh, I keep hearing all this stuff and I. You can't, uh, you gotta believe it because you don't have time to really look into it. So I'd just like to have more time to, uh, look over their presentation. And, uh, research it a little bit.
I think we lost Michelle. So does that mean duties incurred in the interim?
Okay, that wouldn't be good, but sure. Um. Uh, sorry. So I guess we can go back to the presentation.
Yeah, um, Vicky, I think you are sharing an old version of that PowerPoint. Because I'm missing the three slides, um, of the P U D zoning requirement acceptance. So we were going to make that part of another training. So no, no.
Oh, okay. Ignore me then.
Here, but let me get back to sharing if you bear with me for a moment.
Okay, so you pretty much caught me at the end, but, um. Just wanted to go over. So if you do think that you had engaged in an ex parte contact, um. Promptly inform the city attorney's office and, um. Just like we talked about, um, if you feel like you have come into any materials, that would be, um. Considered an ex parte contact. If you didn't share them with anyone. Just err on the side of caution and provide those documents with everybody at the beginning of the hearing or in the weeks before, like. Carl requested. Um, and. If you have one of those conversations, when you describe that contact. Try and do so as completely as possible. So we do know what was said, the other party knows what was said and. We can kind of expunge that, um, that conflict. Okay, and then the end is just for, uh, further questions. You can direct them to Vicky.
Thank you again, Amelia. Um, are there any other questions, um, that we can address this time?
I guess just one follow up. It, is this a, the first of a series of trains? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, that, that's our goal. Um, we want to make sure we have it, um, so it's not too long. At anyone's sitting. Um, but, uh, there had also been a request that we've received for, um, the kind of criteria. That should be assessed, um, when you are looking at duties, uh, what kind of, um, conditions. Can and should, or what, what are the boundaries on conditions that can be imposed on, on developers if they're going to be granted? Um, so that, that's, that's something we have coming up for, for next month.
And then, um, we also received requests about, you know, things that staff typically hears from the community. Like anything presented to you on fence permits or bulk plan requirements or set back or landscape. Um, our goal is to try to get through this. Hopefully, um, before the new code is adopted and we might have another round of, of, uh, educational, um, topics. Once the new code is adopted. Um, but yeah, there's the training from the city attorney's office. And then, um, planning staff will also put together other just small trainings that we'll put in at the end of, at the end of our meetings.
So I guess building on tonight, the only question I would have, if it's something that can happen is. Can welfare be defined? Is that something that we should define? Uh, is that, would you all or? Yeah.
So that's a thing for, for the next, um, training in September. I'll, I'll look into that and, and have that be more, um. Work on getting some factors together on what that would look like.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's it. Meeting adjourned then. Let's, oh, I guess we have, I'm sorry, we have to go through. All the, okay, so it's staff choice. I don't have the agenda. I'll just have to guess. So.
Hi, hi, I'm, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, my computer froze and all that sort of stuff. So. No, 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 you, no, you're correct. You keep going. It's, we do staff choice, attorney's choice and commissioner's choice. You keep going while I try to log back in.
Okay. So does staff have anything?
Uh, I don't have anything other than, um. We will have a, and I think Chris mentioned this on our UDC subcommittee meeting, but we have an update to council. Scheduled for next Monday night.
Okay, thank you. Attorney's choice.
Um, so, you know, that's for having these paintings. So, um, we can look forward to, um, I think it'll be set for September twentieth will be our next, um. Training i- in, in the interim, if there's other topics that you would like to receive further education on, let us know.
Great, thanks. Uh, commissioner choice, I'll just go in the order I see. Carl?
Uh, nothing really, I uh, said all, pretty much all I need to say, I guess, for a one day.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I see Martinez, I apologize, I don't know your first name.
Aaron, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I work with four other Aarons, we have to get my last names.
Oh, okay. Do you have anything for us?
I don't, thank you.
Thanks, Aaron, I apologize, see if we met in person, I would get to know everybody, but that's my ongoing wish. That this Zoom crap will end. Um, Kate, do you got anything?
I just wanted to say thanks to Amelia for training us tonight. And thanks for being an intern for the city.
Yeah. And Colin?
Thank you.
Just reiterate, thanks again uh, to Amelia and Victoria for that information. In Judy, with that note, I think we talked a few months ago about whether we wanted to. Come back at some point in time and kind of tabled it for a while.
Yeah, apparently I was the only one who wanted to come back in person.
Uh, yeah, I mean, on those nights when I'm like rushing down to get here, it's not the worst thing in the world, um. But there are, I think, benefits to going back, and it feels like some of the other commissions I think might be going back, so I wouldn't. You know, have a heartache if we wanted to bring it up maybe next meeting again to to talk about.
Okay, right. And Brenda?
Uh, I'm good, thank you.
And Michelle?
Uh, I don't have anything to add except for thank you, yes, Amelia and um. And the whole, the staff for um, putting together that presentation, as you can tell by all the questions and uh, from the commissioners. Uh, it was something that we needed to talk about, and having this meeting today with the uh. Public forum sort of brought it all home, which was sort of an interesting coincidence, so other than that, I'm good, thank you.
So yeah, um, I was really grateful, what?
Uh, I've got a, let me break in here, the uh. Council has actually been talking about going virtual on their study sessions, so. They mentioned uh, that uh, the planning and zoning has been virtual for for ages. And they uh, they're they're talking about uh, trying to go to saving like thirty dollars a week or something. By going to virtual meetings for a study session. Not not for the council meetings, but for study sessions, so I just wanted to throw that out there, they they talked about that last meeting.
They shouldn't be using us as an example, we use them as an example, that's like this never-ending loop. Anyways, I'm not gonna get on my high horse about meeting in person.
Is that, it costs money for us to have somebody stand outside our meetings or something like that?
I have no idea.
You didn't think about that?
They've never said that was a issue, but. Um.
I think sometimes they get, they get dinner.
I'm sorry, what?
I think sometimes they get dinner if they've got a meet, two meetings in a row or something.
Oh, okay. I didn't mean to start a debate, it was just an offhand comment, sorry.
For next time.
Yeah, for next time, um. I was really, I just want to comment how grateful I was that we actually had. We never have anybody show up at our meetings, so I was really grateful that they were willing to come, so I try and encourage. I've tried to encourage my neighbors who have brought things. To my attention, saying, you got, come to our meetings, come see what we do, I. Understand our process, but anyway, so thank you, um, Amelia and Victoria, that was very helpful, um. It's always good to talk because that ex parte thing is always. A a tough, a tough line, it's very nuanced when you live in the community. To be careful about what comes before us, I I just, I find it very challenging. Um, but yeah, probably the big thing is we can't talk to each other and come to an agreement outside this meeting, that's probably the big thing. And all you have to do is look at Douglas County for where that could go sideways, so um. Anyways, thanks, everybody. We'll see ya. Have a good week. Bye.